Please.
Well, it's not, nothing's agreed to, it's just future plan. Future which.
Good morning, it's 10:00 AM and I'm calling the meeting of Story County Board of Supervisors to order on August 6th. First, I would like to make just a very brief statement. As we all know, yet again, our nation has suffered from gun violence. Last week, we had 31 people killed and over 50 wounded in mass shootings in El Paso, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio. Just days before that, five people were killed and 14 wounded in shootings in South Haven, Mississippi, and Gilroy, California. I would ask you all to join us in a moment of silence for the victims and their families and for our nation. Thank you. And now, if you would like to please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. Supervisor Heddins is joining us by phone today. We'll first go then to adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the agenda as listed today.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Moving second, Olson.
Aye.
Heddins.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The agenda is adopted. Thank you. And that's public comment number one, and that is for the public to address any topics on today's agenda. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address an agenda topic? If so, would you please move to the microphone? Seeing nobody moving to the microphone, I'll close the public comment section. And now, next, we have a proclamation recognizing August 11th through 17th as American Wind Week. And excuse me, I need to read the proclamation. Okay, I will read through this quickly. American Wind Week is August 11th through 17th, 2019, whereas Iowa ranks second in the nation for wind power capacity with nearly 9,000 megawatts installed, producing enough energy to power nearly 2.1 million homes. And whereas Iowa's wind production also ranks second in the nation at 34% of all in-state electricity production, with current and future projects estimated to bring wind's share of electricity production to over 40% by 2020. And whereas Iowa is home to 114 wind farms and 10 wind-related manufacturing facilities. And whereas wind powers opportunities in cities and communities all across Iowa, resulting in $58 million in state and local tax payments and $20 to $30 million in land lease payments in 2018 alone. And whereas wind farms in Iowa have attracted over $16.3 billion in private investment to date, helping to spur critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education programs, and local economic development projects. And whereas the development of wind power now supports nearly 10,000 jobs across the state. And whereas Story County has been a national leader in the development and implementation of regulations guiding wind development while also incorporating tax revenues from wind farms in overall economic development programming and strategies with countywide impacts. And finally, whereas, the advancement of wind power will greatly enhance our ability to attract new businesses and talent to our state and community, and wind energy will continue to grow as a major force in the U.S. economy. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize August 11th through 17th, 2019, as American Wind Week in Story County and encourage Iowans to learn more about wind's impact on our community and celebrate Iowa's leadership in wind energy production. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the wind energy proclamation.
Thank you. A second?
I will second.
Okay, discussion?
None.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Next, we'll go to agency reports. Jerome Raywards is going to report with the Juvenile Court Annual Report.
Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to the board and to Story County for having a great relationship with Juvenile Court Services. As you know, we're part of the judicial branch, but we appreciate your accommodations, your working relationship with the sheriff, the county attorney, and of course, facility management. In my report, the highlights would be the $100,000 line item for our protective living. This is a line item for children that are placed in detention and shelter care, and it also pays for any medical expenses while they're in the detention facility. As you can see, we utilize 51% of the line item. That's pretty consistent over the last few years. I think last year was at 52%. Juvenile Court Services had 20 clients that utilized over $30,000. The Department of Human Services had 19 clients at $13,700. And then we had medical expenses for those children in detention at $7,400. In FY19, Juvenile Court Services only placed two kids in shelter care that were court-ordered. We had one at the YSS Rosedale Shelter, and we had another one down at the Youth Emergency Services Shelter in Des Moines. And they had an average of 26 and 1/2 days for those two children. Also in FY19, we placed 17 kids in detention for a total of 276 days, which was a 16-day average for each child. As you can see, we also have another line item for personal items of $50, and we used 0% of that. In FY20, we're just getting started, and we've already used 5% of the protective living, and hopefully it remains as low as it was last year. On page 2 of my report, this is our final time of reporting allocations to youth and shelter services. As you can see, there's five different line items there, the last one being a grant that we helped keep track of, so to speak. And we have the balance on each one of those, and then also the percent that was used on the far right. Also, part of my report is I attached a two-page letter from the judicial branch. Our state court administrator wrote a letter in May proclaiming the state of Juvenile Court Services and the judicial branch's budget for the upcoming year. And then finally, I listed kids that we have out of their home currently. We currently have four children at the state training school. We currently have one child in detention, one child in shelter at the YES Shelter in Des Moines. We have four children in residential treatment, two are at the Woodward Academy. One is at Youth Homes of Mid-America in Johnston. And we have one at the Four Oaks Stop Program, which is a sex offender facility in Cedar Rapids. We currently have three children that we're monitoring on GPS, and we have zero that are on runaway status currently. And then finally, I have the two attachments, one being the letter from the state court administrator, and second being our complaints and allegations for FY19 received through the Ames Office. Any questions?
Jerome. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Laura. No, go ahead, Laura.
It was Linda Ashley, believe we're not first. Go, Lisa.
So Jerome, my questions are in regards to the placement. Can you tell me how long the kids have been at the state training school or residential treatment?
I'll start with residential treatment. So, a year and a half ago, excuse me, two years ago, the Department of Human Services had new contracts with our group care providers, our residential facilities, and they have an initiative for payment if our children are only there for less than 180 days. So they've reprogrammed their facilities to get our kids in and out of there quicker. Part of that contract was also to keep the children closer to their residence. We can only place kids in our service area, which we're part of the Des Moines service area. So Woodward Academy, which is relatively close, 30 miles basically from Story County. Then we can utilize the Johnston facility, which again, 40 minutes from anywhere in Story County, basically. And then we use the two shelters, either the Rosedale Shelter or the YES Shelter, which is located in Des Moines. As far as the state training school, one, you have to qualify to be a resident there, to be a student, and those qualification standards are listed in the Iowa code. Again, we're trying to get kids through that program as quickly as we can. Some kids struggle earning their weeks advancing through the program. Some kids struggle getting their education accomplished. The highlight of the state training school is when we have a child that possibly didn't have much of a chance in the community of obtaining a diploma, they're able to reach that status at the state training school. And sometimes we keep them longer in that facility to achieve that goal. Does that answer your question, Lisa?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
I saw that you currently have four kids in the training school. How does that run historically? Because I think Story County's always been very low.
Yes. So, we're part of the Second Judicial District, and we're allocated that we can have 14 beds. And right now, we are at our capacity for the Second District. And part of that, not to bore you, Linda, but part of that has to do with our restrictions on where we can place kids. So we can't place kids, historically, we would use Clarinda. We would use Forest Ridge up near Esterville for females, and we might use other facilities outside our service area. So with those restrictions and with kids that qualify, we've opted out for the state training school rather than regular group care.
Okay. Thank you. We ended the fiscal year 19 in your statistics with assault being double the next highest reason that you're interacting with children in a 2 to 1. So can you make some comments there, Jerome, or give us some insight about how assault continues here to be such a serious problem?
Yeah, it's a serious problem. So our assaults come to our office in several different aspects. It may be assaultive behavior in the home. It may be assaultive behavior also at the school. However, a lot of our assaults that are listed here that you pointed out, Laura, come from some of the facilities that we have in Ames, such as the Beloit LSI facility. We receive a lot of referrals from there, from some of the YSS residential facilities. They have three, including Rosedale, the 712 House, and the Youth Recovery House. They're simple assaults, for the most part, but there's some pushing, shoving, punching, that kind of dilemma going on. And we're always working on trying to prevent that with the help of other agencies in Story County, preventative measures. Our schools do a very good job with education and preventative measures as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just know the Juvenile Justice Committee that meets nine months out of the year talks, there's ongoing discussion there about how some of our facilities are being asked to house more and more behaviorally challenged or violent juveniles.
Yeah, so our local residential facilities, no fault of their own, are mixing populations. They're mixing children that are abused and neglected. They're mixing delinquent kids, and they're mixing kids that have mental health difficulties. And that's a challenge for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, did you have any other question?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll have consideration of minutes. We have minutes from July 23rd and July 30th. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve them as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes approved. Next, personnel actions, and we have some listed there. I'd entertain a motion to approve the actions as listed.
I'll make the motion to approve the personnel actions as listed.
I'll second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Next, personnel actions except now, consideration of claims from August 8th. A motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay. And then we come to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda as listed.
I make a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved. We will go on then. Item 11 is public hearings, but we have none today, so we'll go on to item 12, additional items. Assistant Auditor, Lisa Markley, has some information for us.
Good morning. Good morning. Lisa, have a wonderful time. So I want to send the amendment to the paper for public hearing on August 27th, at the regular board meeting, please. An early amendment in the FY is normal. We do it every year. They usually, it's usually because we need carryover expenses. It didn't happen at the end of 19. So you'll notice some of the same things we amended into the end of 19 are being carried forward into 20 because we didn't get them done. Overall, the amendment increases revenues by 26%. That includes bond proceeds, okay? It's actually 2.25% excluding those. The last amendment for FY19 showed $3 million revenue dollar bond that did not occur before the end of the fiscal year. We're still working on that. Hopefully, it'll happen this week. Expenses in this amendment are increasing by 13.3%. $1.5 million of that is for the Storycom payments that are due this year. $569 is for urban renewal projects that are carried forward. We'll talk more about that later in the program, or later in the meeting. And conservation expenses. 3.4 are capital projects carried forward. So as I said, a lot of it is carryforward expenses. The EFT committed funds being drawn down in this amendment are about $429,000. So just so you're aware of that, I tried to note the EFT on the side of the amendment information. There are also adjustments in this amendment for employees' insurance in some departments that have different usage than budgeted. We talked about at budget time that in February, when we're putting a budget together, we have no idea who's going to take insurance. All we can do is base it on what has previously happened. We had, after the signup period and we started the new year, there were some departments that were little, people switched to family, so it's going to be closer. So I thought I'd go ahead and amend them in right now. The information is highlighted on the document indicates amounts requested by the department. So I highlighted what was requested by the departments. The rest of it is Lisa's numbers that she put in there. Lisa, me. The amendment will get published as required by law. It has to be published 10 to 20 days before the public hearing, with the public hearing being held, as I said, 8/27. At that hearing, you can lower the expenses in the service areas, but you cannot raise them. Okay? Any questions on that amendment information that I presented to you?
Any questions?
I have none, just a comment. Once again, thank you, Lisa, for making it very clear for us and for the members of the public about what exactly we're doing. You're welcome.
I have no questions. Yes, thank you for the information.
Okay, do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. I just think you need to, well, just direct me to send it to publication.
Okay. So done. Thank you. Okay, now we have Darren Moon and Evan Duvall. Regarding the Dakota Access Pipeline.
Excuse me, I'm going to back up. It does say consideration on the agenda, so we should go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. I move that we ask the auditor's office to send the first fiscal year 20 budget amendment to publication for the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you for catching that. Okay. Now, Darren?
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Duvall?
Morning.
Good morning.
Just briefly, before I turn it over to Evan, we're hopefully here just to close out the completion of the Dakota Access Pipeline project. I believe it was mechanically completed a little over two years ago, but we've been working on some landowner inspection issues that ISG's been handling in Story County and some other counties. They have a contract for a number of counties that are working as a group. So I think we're finally to the point where, one, we had some damage to our roads, and they have paid that bill as of June, so we had about $10,000 in road damages. So that has been cleared, so we are prepared to go ahead with the closeout process based on whatever tells us next. If there's anything open, he knows of.
Well, thank you for having us. No, to answer the question, Story County, I'll give you a little back history on this. There were 42 punchless items within this county. At one point, all of those have been closed out. That's either through mitigation done by the contractor or an agreement made between the pipeline and the landowner. There were 11 notice violations in the county. Same thing, those were handled. There are none open. Those have gone either mitigation or agreements. So at this point, to get the next process started, which is the county compensation commission process, if it's needed, this board needs to consider the project closed, and that's what we're here to recommend. It's something that we can do, but ultimately, this board has to decide that that's proper at this point.
I have a question. First of all, thank you again for when you met with me and Ethan Anderson several months ago to help explain what was going on, where we were in the process. I appreciate that. So these 11 notices of violation, were they also fined? Was DAPL fined? Or was this just a situation where, once they were resolved, they were?
So the notice of violation process was more or less the punchless item that we had going while the construction process was ongoing. It's just the term that was used. It was how we documented things that needed to get fixed, and we worked with the pipeline and the landowner to make sure that those were addressed during the process. So no, there were no fines, levy. One, that's not our role. We wouldn't be levying any of those, and they were all handled appropriately.
Thank you.
So does that mean that all the landowners are satisfied, or are some going to be pursuing other action?
That's a question we would have to ask each individual landowner. To date, we have not had anything come to our attention, and we've been in contact with the pipeline on this throughout the entire process. So we're not aware of anything within Story County that's outstanding. That doesn't mean that landowners are fully satisfied, but that's not, nothing that I'm aware of right now. So what this process does, according to Iowa Code 479B30, is if landowners have ongoing issues, whether that's grading issues, title issues, other issues associated with this project that are impacting their agricultural production, they can go, they can come to this board and ask that the county compensation process begin. After their presentation, you agree with that, it goes to a court judge, I believe. Again, this is probably best directed toward your county attorney to answer these questions. But then it brings in a third party to kind of assess what the issue is, whether or not it's attributable to the pipeline project, and if there is a financial compensation portion to that. So, I, after we get it in two years, we may have a better answer for it, whether or not that's true.
Thank you. Supervisor Heddins, did you have any questions?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Okay.
I would say I had at least one landowner call with interest in this compensation commission. It wasn't, I don't think, due to incomplete work. It was due to more like damages that he feels like he's due. So I let him know of this meeting today, and he's wanted me to let him know so we could be aware of that 90-day time period. So I'm not sure if he'll claim or not, but that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a resolution in front of us to say that the pipeline was completed. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I would move that we approve Resolution 20-07 to declare that the Dakota Access Pipeline was mechanically completed on May 15th, 2017. And I'd like to note that the Scrivener errors would be corrected before we sign it. There's a couple of errors.
Okay. We'll look at that later then.
Yeah, just we can look at that later.
I'll second that, Laura.
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of a salt storage building, contract for salt storage bonding in Kelly. Darren Moon, again.
This is an item that probably could have been handled through the consent agenda, but I knew I was going to be here anyway, so I thought I'd just show it to you while I was here. Because it was budgeted under our Buildings and Grounds budget item under this current fiscal year. This is what the building will look like down at Kelly. We've built the Kelly shed, and this will go behind that, or off to the west side of the Kelly Building. We chose to go with Freedom Buildings. We got a few different quotes, and this one had some unique options. Hot dip galvanized because of the salt. We're concerned about corrosion, and they have more of a truss system on the inside rather than a single bar, which makes it a little stronger.
That's good.
We plan to pour the slab ourself with our own crews, and we're currently purchasing these blocks from MANATS as they become available, so we should have those all fairly soon. And then, the other good thing about this company is they actually install, where most of them don't, so they have their own crews that install, so they know what they're doing when they come to install it. So this price does include installation, which is nice. So with that, if you have any questions, otherwise, I recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions, Darren?
No, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the contract for the salt storage building in Kelly, excuse me.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract for the salt building in Kelly.
I'll second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you, Darren. And you have the next one also.
One more.
You're on the rule.
What we have here is a resolution for a bridge embargo. We do this every two years. That's based on our federal requirements to inspect all our bridges every two years. When we get our results back from those inspections, we have some load posting changes on some of the bridges. So what essentially this resolution is doing is making these load postings official. Say somebody goes out and goes overloaded through one of these bridges and falls through it, we could technically hold them responsible for damages, but that's why you're passing this. There's been times when people have gone through bridges and the board didn't officially approve these, so they were let off scot-free.
I know our discussion of the bridge, it's over the skunk, right, by the Ames Water Treatment Plant?
Yes.
Okay. I know in that particular situation, I'd asked about our ability to go ahead and claim damages, and I think there were a couple of obstacles. damages, and I think there were a couple of obstacles there with it. In fact, just not knowing who had broken it. So I certainly understand part of that. It's also a safety issue, though, right?
Yes.
That we're doing this for, so.
So I do want to point out a couple of things with this. First of all, the ones with numbers are the load postings that you'll see on this sign. This is our typical weight limit sign. Those are the three numbers on the resolution you'll see for different types of trucks. And then at the bottom, about 15 years ago, we started adding these all vehicles, so the farmers could kind of get it. It covers everything, tractors, so they didn't feel like they're exempt to go over that with anything. So that's what these numbers are, and the one-lane ones mean that only one vehicle can be on at a time. Otherwise, it would be load posted if you have two opposing vehicles on the bridge at the same time. So if we post it one lane, we don't have to load post the bridge, so that's why you see a lot with one lane. And the other thing I want to point out is there's a number of closures in this resolution. I think we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 bridge closures. Four of them were on there prior to, two years ago, but there are two new ones I wanted to address with you, to make you aware of. The first one is down in Indian Creek 13. It's an old arch structure that has these high head walls on it. What happened is, this spring, one of the floods eroded some more material from underneath the bridge, and the bottom collapsed, and the actual arch structure is heavily damaged to the point it cannot be opened again. It's not repairable either. It's starting to collapse on top of the road as well. So this was immediately closed, but this is kind of an official action by the board to say this is closed, and you really have no option. It needs to be closed. Whether we put this in the five-year program, and we discuss that probably sometime in January or not, that can be open for discussion. But we did have this, in the five-year program, three years ago, I believe it was, and it was dropped because of, you can see the stream comes in at a really tight angle here, looking upstream. Looking at aerial view, you can see that. To put a covert in there would be a really long structure to try to match in with the high skew of this bridge, so the cost estimates came in really high. So at that time, the board decided just to remove it from the program and try to get some extra life out of the existing structure, and unfortunately, it didn't take too long for it to reach the end of its life. Here's the structure right here in Indian Creek, Section 13. There's a road a half a mile away, so that's one of the other things the board factored in. It's not a long detour. There's a couple homes here. I did send letters to all the landowners a couple weeks ago, warning of the closure, and see if there's any comments, and I really haven't received any. I don't think the homeowners would be too upset. It'll be less traffic. It'll be more probably of a farmer issue with access back and forth across this stream, but I have not heard from any of them yet. So that's one of the closures that are new. That's this one right here. This is the traffic count map, just to show you, it gets 20 vehicles a day on that road. The next one I'm going to go to is the other closure, is over here by Cambridge. That one gets 30 vehicles a day. That is right here. The yellow dots, what we call the hole in the wall, that's the covert that the bike path goes over, and then our wood bridge is just to the north of that. This is the hole in the wall. You can see our wood bridge on the other side. This is what it looked like this spring, under the poor thaw conditions, and this bridge has been posted five tons for a long time, so we cannot get a mortar grader over it, so it's really hard for us to maintain and keep it in good condition. And then the spring flooding washed out material in the back wall, so there's a huge suck hole. So at this time, the board gave me some direction just to keep this closed until you took official action. We did hold an actual hearing on this one, probably four years ago, to get landowner input on if we should close this or not. At that time, the board decided just to keep it open a little longer. There were some farmers that said they hauled grain over it, which was concerning, because they just posted five tons. And then this is the one, the last time our bridge inspectors were out, their loaded school bus went over while they're underneath, and that concerned them a lot, so they talked to the school immediately. So that's when the board kind of said, we just, we probably need to get this structure closed. We did some repairs about 10 years ago to one of the piers to try to extend the life, but it's the south abutment that's the real problem. It's really hard to see in the photos, but it's really bowed out, and this pile here is almost completely rotted, and it's really bowed, so we really can't take that out to fix it. It would probably collapse the whole abutment, so. And it's pretty high. It's 15, 20 foot, so if somebody did go through this bridge, they'd have a pretty good fall. So there's some safety concerns. So we have put, this is another bridge we've closed in the past. I wanted to point this out with the signage. We put about five of these across to permanently close bridges, and we get a lot of comments. People want us to leave these bridges in for walking structures. What happens, this one's just south of Highway 30, it's 248th Street, I think it is. We'll get trucks that just come and just drive right over the top of the signs. So there should be signs in the middle of this road, but three times, we've had to replace these, because they just drive right over them. So if this keeps happening, we have a concern about this one down in Cambridge, because we lose a lot of signs down in the Maxwell Cambridge area. It seemed to have a lot more vandalism down there, and this one in particular gets, we can't even keep the road closed, signs up for a day, and they get taken down. So we may have to come and remove this bridge at some point, and we'll discuss both these bridges as part of the five-year program discussion if we want to replace either one of these in the future. But I wanted to point those two closures out.
What would it cost to replace a bridge like that?
I think that one is in the range of $300,000. The one, the first one we talked about, I think was closer to $400 because of the length of the covert, but we can probably drop that back to a bridge and maybe do it for $350 or something, but.
Money.
The last one I just wanted to touch on, this is up north by Ziering, and our goal is to get this one fixed. It's hard to tell if this is a brand-new Bemis, lighter or darker color, because it's brand-new. It didn't even last one season, and it got, that stringer got cracks. We were hoping to actually remove the posting off this one. They looked at it, but we're actually lowering it, and we did fix a pile underneath to try to get the posting away, but the concern about this one, it's right here, this triangle. It's south of the intersection. There's a short stretch of Level A road, then it turns to Level B, which is impassable most of the year. Somebody just built a brand-new house right here. So if this structure does go out, they're going to have no access to their home, so I just wanted to point that out.
They built on a Level B road?
Just to the north of it.
Just to the north of it.
So it's on a Level A.
It's on the A, but just...
Yes. But for them to use the Level B to get out, if the bridge has an issue, would be a difficult thing to do.
So Darren, we would be responsible for the repair on that bridge then, correct?
Yeah, we don't know who did it. There's some grain bends in areas that, pretty good guess on how it happened, but...
Was it last year or the year before that you had to have a crew out, like on Thanksgiving weekend, for a bridge where we have only single access, one family access?
That was one of our driveway bridges, unfortunately. It's a similar situation. It's their only way in and out, and yes, we had to work quickly to get that one fixed so they could get to their home for Christmas.
Oh, Christmas it was. Thank you for that once again, but they clearly offer some challenges beyond just the structure.
Correct. There's just a few issues I wanted to point out, and then we will create a new 2019 bridge posting map we post on our website with all the load-posted bridges, so we have that ready this week. I suppose this is a good point. I just want to point out quick, we do have, one of our strategic plan goals, I believe it is, it's in there to reduce the number of posted bridges in the county. Just to give you an idea why that's a bit of a struggle, last, 2017, we had 66 load-posted bridges. Right now, with this resolution, counting the two new closed bridges, I think we're up to 68. So we actually went up, even though in those two years, we replaced, I think, 12 bridges, replaced a handful more, so you'd think we'd go down, but, one, some bridges deteriorate with time, but this one was more due to the fact of law changes of loadings. We had two law changes, one for some special haul vehicles that required us to load post more bridges, and then the most recent one was this past year, due to some logging complaints, some loggers, mostly in northeastern Iowa, wanted to haul some heavier loads over some bridges, so legislature passed, allowed that, but that required all the counties to rerate a lot of bridges and post, we'll probably have to post 10 to 15 more bridges because of that law change, and it really doesn't have a lot of impact in Story County, unfortunately, but it does affect us that way, so we're trying to make headway on replacing our bridges, but it was more the law changes than anything. It doesn't make it look like it when you look at the load postings we have, so just wanted to point that out.
Thanks. Superfessor Heddins, do you have any questions?
I just have one question. Darren, the signage down in Cambridge, I know that you've had to replace that a number of times. I'm just wondering, how often are you having to replace that particular sign down there?
That one, it was just a couple weeks ago when we got those permanent signs put in with the posts, but we have also left up the advance warning, the temporary signs we put in, the Type 3s with the fences on it, so we kind of have a double protection there right now. We haven't had a lot of time to see how the permanent signs are going to go as far as getting knocked down or not, so at some point, we're going to take down the temporaries and see how the, you know, the permanent ones go. If we're down there every month replacing them, yeah, I'll have to come back to board with some other recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I just want to make note that Darren had passed on an email from Sheila, is it Dune or Dunn?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Would you like to talk about that a minute?
Yes, that was the second bridge down by Cambridge, so we did have one comment back on that one, and that was just based on her seeing the signs. I didn't send notices out to that one, because we had held a public meeting in prior years on that one, but yeah, hers wasn't really a loading concern. It was more, she just uses that bridge, and she feels like that bridge is important to get people access to the heart of Iowa, bike path. So those were her concerns.
Thank you. And I have no questions.
Okay.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 20-10, Bridge Embargo.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 20-10, Bridge Embargo.
I second.
Okay. Discussion, hearing none. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Oh, Darren, I just wanted to tell you that I was out a bit last week, may go out a little bit this week, just kind of driving around, just checking in with some of the crews, and I was very impressed with the condition of the roads. I know they worked very hard. They have had a very tough last six to seven months, and the roads look great, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you. They're finally starting to take shape.
I would second that. I was on a tour Saturday of the southern part of the county, looking at Conservation Commission parks, and I was looking, saying, "Now, I'm going to say, this is an ice gravel road." So they're looking good.
Good.
And Darren, I would just like to say thank you for taking the time yesterday to visit with me out at your location and to introduce me to the individuals that you work with. Being a new supervisor, I really appreciate the opportunity to get to know all the employees throughout the county.
Yep, thank you.
So next, we have discussion and consideration for a quote between Story County and Cowan Communications for a radio tower at Animal Control, unbudgeted. Barb?
Good morning.
And Jerry Moore.
Good morning, Board. Barbara Steinbach, Information Technology. Jerry Moore, Planning and Development. We're here to ask for consideration and approval for an expansion of the network project at Animal Control. Just a little background, we had budgeted $15,000 for a radio solution for that building. It was installed and in less time than we expected and tested, and turns out, those darn pine trees at the cemetery are interfering with our radio signal. So the vendor came back with an additional solution, which would be to take that radio antenna and put it on a tower. So you can see the quotation, and the quote was for $7,800. However, if you look over on the left-hand side, they have credited us for the bracket for the antenna, and then also, they're going to take the labor off of that. So the total cost for this tower would be about $2,900. But then, when you talk about tower, you talk about safety, so we also need to pour a pad and put some fencing on. So facilities, Joby went out, looked at the area, and came up with about a $1,500 expense for some fencing. So we're looking at almost $5,000 in addition to the 15 we've already spent. So then, thank you, Linda, for the email. She asked if we had checked with the city of Nevada. Now, this property is not within city limits, but, so I checked with Jerry from Planning and Development, and that added an additional complication to our seemingly simple solution to the project. And Jerry did a lot of research, and I really thank you for all the time you put into this, especially last-minute stuff. And so we had to make sure that the location of the tower was not within the easement and so far away from the road. We had originally thought we might put the tower on the southwest corner. Joby went out with the vendor and thought that was a good spot until Jerry mentioned some concerns. So now, we're going to put it on the northwest corner, but we also have to have, what is it, a conditional use permit? How does that work?
Yeah, the Story County Land Development Regulations require for buildings and structures that are erected and used by, in this case, county entity, to go through a conditional use permit process. And because it's in a commercial and industrial district, there's also some additional detailed standards for non-commercial communication towers. And as Barb mentioned, Joby looked at the site and the proposed tower height, and thinks that we can hit the requirement. There's 115% requirement of a setback based on the height and some additional standards.
With the conditional use permit, then, Jerry, as we go through that process, then adjacent landowners might want to weigh in? Has anybody felt them out at all? The people who actually own the lake and pond, whatever you want to call that water?
Yeah, we'll actually start with a conceptual review, which is just an informal sit-down to communicate with the rest of the departments about the project, but our process would involve sending to us all the handlers and then for the clients, they would receive information about it and be able to ask questions, communicate with us.
And then, it's my understanding that the conditional use permit would just allow Story County to use this tower and no one else?
Right. It's primarily for the use of, in this case, the county government.
So how long does that take usually for the CUP?
Well, the, I haven't actually looked at deadlines, but conceptual review, we meet every week, so just a request. By noon Tuesday, and then we meet that Thursday, this Thursday, we meet to talk about it. But the item would go to the planning and commission. We meet on Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, and then we follow up with the board adjustment, which is going to be on the Thursday.
So we've missed it for this month.
You missed it for this month.
Yeah.
So I don't doubt that that will be doable. The question is, do we accept the quote now? Probably not, or do we wait until we have a conditional use permit? I don't see a problem with accepting the quote now.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem with it. We won't obviously pay for it until it's done, and if we don't end up being able to use this particular plan and hardware, then we just move on from that.
Right, correct.
You'd come back with something revised, but...
We've looked at other options, and this is the best option, considering the location of that building. Unfortunately, there's a few more things that we have to do to get it in place.
There's always a few more things, aren't there? Okay, well, Jerry, thanks for getting on top of this right away and getting the information here for us. Appreciate that.
I should add, just to record, that I did talk to the county attorney's office about the process and making sure that the question was...
Who would be representing us, then?
Who would be representing us, then?
The, well, I would think Sue, Animal Control, since it's on their property.
Okay.
But Barb could be involved.
Yeah, I could.
It would require signatures from property owners, so maybe it would involve a signature because they share the board. Because these things, again, they ultimately go to the board of justice.
Right, so we're not, the board of supervisors is not involved, or Ethan, check with Ethan. I mean, it's just, we'll have to have somebody there being our official representative.
Okay. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the quote between Story County and Calhoun Communications for radio tower and also the estimated quote for fencing for the Animal Control Department in the total amount of $4,530.
So second?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, quote is out, accepted. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So CEO, we get caught up in our own regulations, right?
Okay, next, Barb Steinbeck again for watchtower, or watchguard attorney redaction software and hardware.
Yes, this is, so, this is actually, it's a project that the county attorneys have asked us to look into, and this is something that really we had no control over. So we get videos from different entities. City of Ames has gone toward the watchguard solution, and they're very proprietary. And a lot of the videos that they sent to us have to be redacted, and you can't just pull up your redaction software and do this. You have to have the watchguard redaction software. So, and it is very processor-intensive, so it does require its own hardware. So this quote is for software, and then I enclosed an email from Joel, who did a quick hardware evaluation. It may be off by a couple hundred dollars because of the whole tariff thing going on right now. A lot of our parts come from the Middle, or from the Asian countries. So it's approximately a $7,200 project. And the reason we're asking, it's not budgeted either way, and there was a little bit of a miscommunication in the timing of the project at budget time. So we thought they were going to do it before this year's budget, and they thought it was in this year's budget. So it didn't get into anybody's budget, but it was discussed at budget time.
So Barb, would you explain just for Lisa, in just a couple of sentences, about what the rule of thumb is?
Sure.
About when the department pays for it and when it gets added to IT's budget?
Sure. And what we've done in the past is, so in December, late November, December, we usually reach out to each department to want to get an understanding of what their IT needs are for the following year so we can put it in our budget. And as you know, sometimes it's hard to look a year ahead or year and a half ahead. So usually, we're pretty close. But this year, the county attorney thought maybe they needed the software sooner because of the amount of videos that were coming in, and it hadn't been fully implemented by City of Ames, but it was looking to be a problem. So they requested to have it done before the 2020 budget. And so in that case, if it's non-budgeted and it's within the previous budget year, we ask the departments to find money in their own budget. And I hope that, I know I'm kind of rambling, but I hope that's clear. So anything that has been approved and in the IT budget, we are more than happy to follow through with. But if there's a request that comes in that we don't have money budgeted for, we ask that department try to find money in their own budget. Does that make sense, Lisa?
Okay.
So now, since this is fiscal year 20, if we approve this amount, it'll go into IT's budget?
Correct.
So Barbara, so I just have one just a clarifying question. So the total amount is for the 7,24382, but it looks like the quote says 599. And then is that plus the hardware, which is the 12,5382? Is that, is that how I'm reading that?
Yes, the software itself is 5999 or 5990, and then the hardware to run that would be about $1,200.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that is, a computer usually costs between $700 and $900. So it is a really beefed-up piece of hardware to run the software.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay. And then this would, I would entertain a motion to accept the quote between Story County and WatchGuard for the software and hardware.
I'll make the motion to accept the quote between Story County and WatchGuard for the software.
Okay, you're second?
And the hardware.
And the hardware, thank you.
Yep, perfect.
I would second.
Okay, further discussion? If not, Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Barb, very clear explanations about what's going on.
Okay. And now, we have consideration of Rosalyn Mackey-Harris Architects as the consultant for the HVAC equipment replacement for the jail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Joby?
Sent out a request for proposals to start the design phase of the HVAC equipment upgrade for the Justice Center facility. Last week, we received two proposals, one from RMH Architects out of Ames and one from IMAG located in Des Moines. Both proposals were evaluated by a group of three, Leanne Harder, John Eicholtz, and base the, we judge them all off of their proposed price, experience in the type of project, their location, previous work with Story County, and their availability to begin. And we settled on RMH Architects, and they happen to be the lowest-dollar provider. And this is for the design, the proposals just asked for design services. RMH went ahead and included a price for, if the project were to go to construction phase, but we would just, if the project goes to construction phase, we would handle that as an addendum to the design contract. So this request is just for the $14,000 design services. And then IMAG's design services total was $18,500, and they did not include a constructed administration cost. But we didn't ask for one, so. Sorry, questions?
None, thank you. Very well explained, including yesterday, our little phone call where I couldn't find all the documents.
Yeah, missing a couple of pages, yeah.
Thank you for that help.
You're welcome.
So then, I would entertain a motion for accepting the proposal for design services at $14,000 for RMH.
I would make that motion. I'm going to just ask, Joby, do you want us to go ahead and do the $10,000 at this time as an amendment?
I think we would wait and handle that as an addendum, like as planned. Just do the design, and then once, if the project's approved by the board to move forward with the construction phase, then we would, that's generally how we handle these.
I would move $14,000. The contract be awarded to Rosalyn Mackey-Harris Architects for the design services for the HVAC equipment replacement at the jail housing facility.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much. Should we?
One other thing I think we should, and then just go ahead and direct to work with the county attorney's office to work on a contract for the design services.
I so accept that amendment.
I'll second.
Okay. Amendment, okay, voting on the amendment then?
I guess so. Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Guess it could have been direction, but now you have a whole vote.
All right.
Okay, then we'll go on to department reports. Community Service Department report, Carla Webb. Morning, Carla.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is my quarterly report rounding out fiscal year 19, so it's from April to June. For our general assistance program, you'll see there, we assisted 20 single households, 25 families, for a family, or for a total of 45 for the quarter, for the fiscal year, it was 169 total, single and family households that we helped. For referrals to other resources, we had 249 of those. The year-to-date was 1,026. We had 17 people that applied but did not return. For types of assistance, for rent, we provided $17,073.47. Utilities was $1,064.95. And then for miscellaneous items, the bulk of this is going to be for burial, was $2,908. We had six individuals that we paid for in regards to substance use services. The next part of my report is something new that I put in here. It's a fiscal year review, I'm looking from FY16 to FY19, and I wanted to talk about this section a little bit. The general assistance program falls under Iowa Code Chapter 252, Support for the Poor. Iowa Code 252.1 defines a poor person, and they define it as to mean those who have no property, exempt or otherwise, and are unable because of physical or mental disabilities to earn a living by labor. This section shall not be construed to forbid aid to needy persons who have some means, when the Board shall be of the opinion that the same will be conducive to their welfare and best interests of the public. I believe it was back in July when we had the general assistance appeal, there Supervisor Olson asked how our income guidelines were set. So looking back on that, the income guidelines, my understanding, were initially established with consideration of the family investment program, so FIP, and food assistance amounts. Back when that was set, individuals who were receiving those full benefits would have been considered over income for our income guidelines. So if you recall, for a single person, it's 481 a month, 581 for a two-person, and then on up from there. It looks like back in 2008, a change was implemented where we no longer counted food assistance as income. So thus, more people would have become eligible because we were no longer counting that. And looking back, as far as I can tell, there has not been an increase to the income guidelines as far back as 2006, as far as I can tell. So with the income guidelines where they are at, you'll see in this report, the assistance that we've provided over the last four fiscal years, it averages out to about $86,290 per year. The bulk of our assistance is in rental assistance for individuals, and then it would go down to, would be funeral assistance, then utilities, and then bus tickets. So that's, gives you a snapshot of, based on the income guidelines where we're at right now, this is the assistance we're able to provide, the number of individuals that we are able to help, where the guidelines are set at right now. For those individuals where we refer on to other resources, fortunately, in Story County, we do have a number of agencies that are able to assist those folks. We always give them information on those options. Jane, any questions?
Yeah. If Lisa or Linda, do you have questions or first or?
Supervisor Hens, do you have any questions?
I don't. I just want to make a comment and say, Carla, I, just because I've worked in the area for a long time, I appreciate the detailed information that you've provided here. I also know that these are essential services for our vulnerable island to reach out and need assistance. So I'm just glad that we are able to provide at the level that we can. I guess the one question I do have, do we have any waiting list for any particular services?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a waiting list?
No, not for our general assistance program at all.
Okay, thank you.
So my, my question is that I know that you've referred out 1,026. Your report said there was 200, almost 300 denials this last quarter. So do you find that we have a lot of individuals who are just over the line? Or is it over $100 over the line?
I would have to go back and look. My gut would say it's a lot over the line.
Okay.
If somebody is really close, within like 10, 20 bucks, we have done exceptions in the past for that, but I think the majority of them you're going to see are quite a bit over.
And then, once again, food assistance is not counted as part of income anymore, correct?
Correct.
All right. Is assistance to families, and I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called now, it goes through different names, STANF, et cetera, is that counted as part of income then?
The family investment program?
Family investment program.
Yes, that is counted as income.
Okay.
Yep.
So I appreciate the information. I know that there is a proposal right now, federal, on the federal level, that would knock off another 500,000 families from food stamp assistance. So as we look at that moving forward, to see if our applications just kind of watch that. I understand that this is a program not meant to sustain people, it's to help them over a hump. It just, when I looked at the initial guidelines, I thought, boy, I couldn't live on that.
Right.
Yeah.
They are very low.
Okay. Well, thank you, that's the information I asked for, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? And Carla?
Do you want me to talk about the MHDS part of the report with it? So as you know, we entered, Story County entered into an agreement with CICS for Story County to become the fiscal agent as of July 1st, and we're very appreciative of that, appreciative of the Auditor's Office for all their work that they've done. I think the transition has gone pretty smoothly, I would say, so. We're grateful for their partnership with us. We did over 60, or about 60 FY20 contracts, and then throughout the year, we're continually adding providers into our network, so I anticipate even next year, and as we start to work towards the children's system and contracting with those providers, I anticipate the contracting only increasing there. We did hold our second meeting with providers, law enforcement, and other individuals to talk about the access network concept, and that's something that we're continuing to pursue as a network concept. So that lead agency would then work with providers for the crisis stabilization, substance use, and subacute services. They would be the coordinating body for individuals who are entering into the access center network. As you know, we've had a lot of legislative changes. The legislation that requires intensive mental health core services is to be implemented by July 1 of 2021, so we're currently working on that as well. The services that we need yet to develop in our region that are part of the mental health core services, or the intensive mental health core services, would be the access center services, the intensive residential service homes, we call those URSH. So if you hear that term, that's what that means. Subacute mental health services, as well as crisis stabilization community-based. We do have crisis stabilization residential, which is the program that we have partnered with Mary Greeley Medical Center to do the services at the Hazel location there in Ames. So we're continuing to work on getting those services developed in our region. We currently have administrative staff who are conducting a review of the transitional living center services. This is, I think, a service that's unique to our region. I'm not sure that other regions have this available. It's the service where an individual can stay up to 90 days to develop a plan to reintegrate back into the community. We're looking at potential changes to this service that would allow the providers to draw down Medicaid funding and still meet the needs of individuals. Right now, this service is 100% regionally funded at over $1 million a year, and so we need to, we need to figure out how to draw in some Medicaid funds and, so that we can pay for some of the more crisis services. So we're working on that. We're also in the process of looking at our 2080 agreement to address legislative requirements from the House File 690 for the Children's Behavioral Health System. We've entered into a contract with CIR for drop-in center services in Warren and Hamilton County. Once those get up and going, we'll have just two counties left in our region that will need to get drop-in center services up and going. And then also, the CIT training was held. We partner with NAMI, Lisa, you might have to help me here, NAMI, Story County Attorney's Office, ISUPD, Ames PD. Am I missing anybody?
Correct. Yeah, in CICS.
In CICS. So that training was held in June with 18 law enforcement personnel attending. As far as on the community services side of things, we met with ISAC, and we also had a local provider agency that met with us as well to talk about database needs as we talk about the centralized intake process. They did a review of our meeting, we had an all-day meeting. They did a review of our meeting, we had an all-day meeting with them, I believe it was, in May, and then ISAC submitted a report to us with their recommendation that we look at using the Community Services Network, which is the existing system that we use for MHDS services. So they had suggested that we look at doing enhancements to the current system. So we do have a phone call set up with them later this week to discuss next steps on that. And our staff continue to remain involved in various committee activities, and then attend county trainings when possible. And Erin Riewerts, as CBSO, did 101 interviews with veterans and surviving spouses this past quarter. Any questions?
Questions for Carla?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good thorough report.
Thank you.
Carla, I also want to thank you for the additional work that you're doing right now, when we don't have a Director of External Operations with help with the asset billings and contracts and any asset issues that come up. I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. You bet. It gets me over here a little bit more, so it's kind of been fun, so, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Now we have Sue McCasky with Animal Control Quarterly Report.
Good morning, Sue. You're lacking a visual aid today.
I did not bring a visual aid today.
We have plenty of them. I could have brought.
Yeah.
Well, good morning. So I've just got some numbers we can run through. So our, it seems as though the winter that we had, the cat trend, primarily cats, usually runs in like, we start getting stuff in in May, June, and July. Those are our heavy months. Well, I think, according to what we've heard, is there is a lot of animals that just with our funky spring and winter didn't make it through, so we are now been pushed back. And so the numbers I'm giving you, for April, May, and June, the amount of cats in was seventy, the number of cats adopted was forty-five for those three months, and then the cats that are euthanized and died were five. And those were hopeless animals that we could not help. Dogs in, April through June was thirty-four. We had forty adopted, and we had one that was euthanized. Our volunteer hours in April were 117 hours, our May were eighty-three, and June were seventy-three, so that always drops off a little bit when the students go home. We have a lot of student support from Iowa State, so that usually drops off during the summer. And community service hours, and this is usually like court-mandated stuff, we, we didn't have any at this point, at this quarter. After hour animal calls, so May got real hairy for us, so we, after hours, we had seven in April, but in May we had seventeen after hour calls. So, it was just, there were dog bites and cat bites and aggressive animals, there was just about anything it seemed like you could imagine. So May was kind of a, I'm glad it's, it's the exception this time and not the rule because that was, we were just, seems like we were going home and going back out, so. And in June, we had six, so came back down. And just for your information, our current cat population is 172, so that's really good for us because we have had a lot of adoptions in July. And just to give you an example, one day in July, a couple weeks ago, we got in twenty animals in one day. We got sixteen cats and four dogs in. So that just immediately, you know, your numbers go up. That being said, we've had a lot of adoptions in July, so things are starting to be where they're supposed to be. Our current cat population, 172, current dog, eighteen, two rabbits, one ball python and two guinea pigs. Our total number of animals right now is about 195.
Sue, could I ask where we are on adoptions and et cetera? Are we doing anything for Clear the Shelters Day?
No, we are not.
Okay.
And that's a different kind of promotion. Our application system is run a little bit different than that. So for us, we choose not to do that. We were involved in that kind of thing over at Petco a few weeks ago, and, but since we do take applications and we have to check with, you know, the things that we need to verify on our applications, our system is a little different.
Okay. Thank you.
Donations to animal shelter from private donors and fundraisers in April was 842. In May, it was 6,919, and in June, it was 5,361, for a total of 13,122.54. And the breakdown of it was our shelter shindig, which was held on May 18th, brought in $4,300. That was from C and K. Our Chasing Tales fundraiser on June 15th brought in 5,361, and we had Muffins and Mimosa's on June 22nd. This is a first-year event, it was down in Collins, and it was 280, 236. The total for those is $11,061.54, and the private donations added on to that of $2,061 make up our total. So it's been...
Sue, how does those, how does those fundraising breakdowns, how does that compare to like last year?
Um, I would say, you know, dollar amount, there are a few of them we've done this year that we had not done before, but for the two larger ones, they came out just about the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh. So, we have, we had other fundraisers in July, which will be next time, but yeah, so we continue to have our fundraisers, and we continue to be very happy with the support that the people give towards the shelter. We have an open house. We're so excited. It's scheduled for Friday, but there is a notation of a date change. It should be September 27th. I had September 28th in my head, and then somebody told me that that was impossible, so. But it will be on Friday from 11 to 6:00. And we're going to have games, drawing, silent auctions. We've got a lot of prizes that we're going to be doing. We're going to have a shelter reunion for animals that were adopted there. Only requirement is please have a rabies tag on them. We're going to have food, pictures taken, tours of the shelter, and we're just trying to think of fun things for people to do and to come in and enjoy. And so, there's a lot changed. It, it seems like, you know, just when you think one thing is done that amazes you, then something else is done that is like, wow, you know, so. We had two instances in, actually, both of them were in May, and, no, May and July, I'm sorry. No, that's not right either. June 15th, Sue. Okay. Anyway, we had two incidents involving horse trailers on county roads and interstates. On May 24th, we had a truck and trailer heading north of Ames on I-35 at Hydro Plain on a rainy day and went in the ditch. The trailer was a total loss, but the horse, we were able to get the horse out of it. We had brought our stock trailer with us and put the horse in it and transported it to Iowa State. The other one was actually on the night of our, of our Chasing Tales fundraiser, and that, of course, was the one on the roll and blacktop where a young woman lost her life. And we actually went up there, we were actually at the fundraiser when we got called, but we got Iowa State called right away, so their field services offices could come out and help us, because at that point, the horse was standing, and it, it really just looked like it had some sort of a injury on its, on its back, like hip. And so, the horse did not want to load in the trailer, which is why it was being walked down the blacktop. And we tried to get it loaded, we couldn't. We gave it ace promazine, which is kind of a drug to kind of just chill it out, and it still didn't want to chill out. And keep in mind, the whole time, this poor horse is standing. Finally, Iowa State showed up, we did, we did get medication into it enough that the horse just went down, so we could get it in. And with the help of the Nevada Fire Department, we were able, with straps and everything, I think there was twelve of us, to get this horse dead weight loaded into the trailer successfully. The horse was then taken to Iowa State, and when they got there, they started to look at the injuries and realized that the horse had a broken femur, which on a horse, you can't do anything with. So the horse had to be euthanized. Remodeling at the shelter started to wind down. Joby's probably just smiling about that.
She's got a fireworks permit.
Yeah. Painting, the lighting, odds and ends are being done by the end of June, we were waiting, well, by the end of June, we thought our parking lot would be put in, but there was an issue with it, so it will be done in August, my understanding. And, but we've got some fencing being fixed that just, you know, it's kind of like trial and error when you're putting animals in it. You've got Houdinis, so you've got to always, you know, figure out how to keep them enclosed, so we're having some fencing things taken care of. We've had a lot of calls that we have gone on. A lot of the animals have not ended up in the shelter when we had the heat wave that came through for a while. We had a lot, we were checking on a lot of livestock, and we had some calls on, like outside dogs that were outside, et cetera, so, and everybody was really good about complying. I, I, you know, it's still an issue of, when you're suffering, the animals are suffering, and so, you know, you've got to do the same for them as, as what you're doing, try to keep them cool. So we were out on a calls for them. We have had both ringworm and respiratory come in the shelter, and we hate ringworm because it's like, goes on forever, but with all of our stray cats. But we luckily have not seen any parvo, which is a big thing in a shelter. It has, we have never had parvo in almost the ten years that we've been at this location. So, we use a very good disinfectant, and sometimes when I'm, you know, writing out the claim for it, I kind of cringe, but I know why we do it, because we, we don't have those parvo issues. And we do treat our animals that have respiratory or ringworm, and they're available for adoption, so. And, so the importance, I wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of our donation account, our Friends of the Animals. And, so, this great account with, you know, supplemented by terrific people, was enabled us to pay for half of the purchase of the building and the grounds, and also enabled us to pay for half of the remodeling that we did. And then this fund is also used for, you know, it's anything that will directly benefit an animal, which obviously, the, the shelter purchase and the remodeling will definitely do that. But it also takes care of injuries for animals. We have animals hit by cars. We have, you know, yesterday, we came in, or we, we had a cat come in that had a, you know, it was broken in the back end, but they're not sure yet what, but it was taken to the vet, and so this money is there to directly help the animals, so people see return on, on what they've given to and know that, you know, that's our goal, is to see that the animals that we have in our custody and that we take care of are taken care of in our donation account. And it's, the money we raise is definitely very much appreciated, but it also is very much needed, so. And with that, I should say, we just, we've been taking off a lot of legs, taking out a lot of eyes, I know it sounds awful, but these animals are getting adopted. So, you know, they're not throwaway animals, they're, they're finding homes. We remain classified as the no-kill shelter, which is qualified by having an adoption rate of 85% or higher. So, we only euthanize animals that are so badly injured or sick that there's nothing that can be done by vet's advice. So, our adoption rate remains extremely high in the high nineties. I mean, we, we haven't sat down to figure that, but that's been that way for several years. And that kind of ties in with our donation account, I think, and also the support given by the county for vet bills, because if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So, you know, it's very, very good, and we're very proud of what's going on out there.
You should be. I just kind of go back, you were talking about the disinfectant, but you have exceptionally high reviews when the state comes in every year to review you, and, and that is in part because of that care you do. And then, just for, for the two of you, this came up when we were looking at the Animal Control Law in 2017, et cetera, but I went around to the various towns, met with most of the city councils, and I got asked at a couple of them about, are we an animal control or animal shelter, given the fact that we do hold our animals longer than five or seven days? And I was able, because of Sue's efforts with the Friends of Animals account, to assure them that we are not providing extraordinary care for animals out of county taxpayer dollars, that we, those, all that extraordinary care, that some people would say extraordinary, and that longevity is, is a result of the Friends of Animals account, because we're only taking care of basic needs through our tax dollars. So you just do a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I do not.
All right. Thank you.
I do not.
Great report.
Thank you very much. And now we have a presentation on TIF by Lisa Markley and Leanne Harder.
Changed my password yesterday, so I'll see if I remember it.
Okay. Good morning, Leanne.
I didn't put you on the agenda. Who put you on the agenda? This is very brief, okay? I did provide it to you. Lisa had asked, rightfully so, to make sure that she had time to review it before and ask questions if necessary, which, I don't know if she didn't have questions or saving them for today. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, about the available funds. But in doing so, I wanted to go back and, and just clarify and discuss with you what has been done with what we, what we had brought in. So, there are no, there were no URA projects, Urban Renewal Projects in FY19. We did borrow the last million for Phase Three of Talc out of the dollars. There are two components to the TIF funding, the borrowed debt and the project funding, which is also considered debt, obviously. Revenue projections are based on the previous year levies when budgeting and the best available info. So, I know it's frustrating, and I know we've had many conversations about TIF, and I know we've all sat down, and Lucy hasn't been included, TIF is not easy to determine and/or give you actual information about until it's over, until the year's over. But we can't, if we're going to collect TIF, we have to certify debt to it. So, those are the two rules. So throughout time, AKA 2013 through today, we've borrowed 7.3 million. The balance due on those debts is 4.2, a little over 4.2. The very first borrowing was 3.1 for Dakin's Lake. That will be paid off in FY22, okay? We've borrowed 4 million for Talc, we've borrowed 159.2 for better paving. The projects that we have funded from 2014 to 2019, 1.555433 is the total projects that we have funded for individual requests. I did note the amounts payable, Leanne and I have talked about this. There's, there's, the three fiscal years, 16, 17, and 18, still have dollars that have not been drawn down.
And currently, we, we have no restriction, that can just stay there and continue to be drawn down? We don't have a...
It has to be. Unless you give it back to the entities, you, you either, they either draw it down or you give it back to the county and all the levying authorities.
Return it to where it would have gone had there not been?
Yes.
I know, Lisa, you had said at one time that you had told us who it was. When we talk on August 20th, if we could have that list available...
I can tell you if you'd like it.
I, I'm going to type right now. Okay.
So, okay, so in FY16, that 80,082, Slater has $164.94 to draw, and the Prairie Rail Trail, 7991768. FY17, Collins has 2250 to draw. Now, 2,250. Understand that they've drawn down some of the project, not all of it.
Right.
Is, is why these, you know, marginal, or small are. Slater has 45,000, and again, Prairie Rail Trail has 114061. Cambridge, or FY18, excuse me, Cambridge has 781.76. Gilbert, 58,100. Slater, 94.5.
Thank you.
Now, I want to talk a minute about the Prairie Rail Trail, because that is a county And, and if Mike were here, he would roll his eyes because I nag him all the time about it. He also got a SERP to grant on that, and he has to draw down those funds in a certain period of time. So he is using those funds before the TIF funds.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And I do remind him every time a claim comes through that, don't forget, we have these funds, you need to draw them down. So, on to the most recent projections available. The revenue projections are based on the previous year's levies when budgeting, because that is the best available... that is the best available info. For the FY19 budget, Story County did estimate 968,779. The actual amount we brought in was 888,81658. BPTC affects TIF properties, business property tax credits. BPTC changes every year. We cannot say, oh, we're going to get this amount, because it depends on what businesses file for BPTC credit. And then as Lucy pointed out to me yesterday, not only that, but if there's a change, then it changes all the allocations throughout the state. So in the 99 counties, if there's a BPTC change, it changes all the allocations. BPTC is not something you want to talk to Lucy about, just so you know.
Okay. Thanks for the...
It does change every year, depending on the number of commercial entities that are in the TIF district, okay? So let's go to best revenue projections for FY20 is now 904,01566. The current debt obligations is 822,34636. So the number you are wanting is 169.5 is my best estimate at this point in time. What was my, oh, so I did also provide you with just a, these are the, these are the entities that have requested the amounts, or the, the amounts that we have given them over the, the five years and the number of requests they've made.
Number of requests made or funded? This should be funded, right?
Funded, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Because we have had a couple of times where not every request was honored.
Yes.
We're probably there this year.
Do you have any questions for me? Is there anything else you want to know?
No, thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time either.
Okay.
That's very helpful information. Thank you.
Leanne, anything to add?
I'm here to support Lisa.
Okay.
You did a great job. Excellent.
Thank you very much. Anything on upcoming agenda items?
I don't think, not that we've not already talked about at some point. I think August 20th and August 27th are going to be the big days. Bring a sack lunch.
We are going to...
Just to say, I agree that I think they're going to be a big agenda day.
Yeah, and we will have an abbreviated agenda next week, because Supervisor Hiddens won't be here, you know, by phone. So next, we have public forum number two, comments from the public for items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wanted to make a comment? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public forum. And we'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisor. Supervisor Hiddens, do you have any announcements?
Uh, yeah, just the one thing that I will update you on is Central Iowa Recovery is still in discussions of making changes to our 2018 agreement. They are looking to take over their, unfold CIR under Hamilton County. We haven't received any resolution from Hamilton County yet. I do anticipate something being presented at our next board meeting. If not, it would be relatively soon. So I will bring that forward when that does occur.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Olson.
In addition to taking a little bit of tour on some of the secondary roads and stopping and talking to some people while I was out last week, I stopped by Hickory Grove, happened to get there while the contractor for the beach house was there. And so we had a chat, and he passed on a compliment about our staff, our conservation staff, that I will pass on into the conservation board. But praised the, working with Luke, our Phil Meyer, and also for, sorry, Ryan. He found him very easy to work with, and he specializes in these kinds of projects throughout Missouri and Iowa. So he was very, had a lot of praise. Then I just drove through the campgrounds, and I was impressed. They were immaculate, just immaculate. And so what happened, the host was there, I just stopped and said hello, and, and so I was very impressed. So I wanted to make note of that. I'm going to go to the Board of Health meeting this afternoon, Lisa. I'm just going to sit in the audience. There are a couple of items on the agenda that I think are headed our way, so I just want to kind of get a little preview in my mind, if you don't mind. But I'm going to sit in at the board table, so.
No, I, I appreciate you stepping in. Thank you.
I'm going to be out of this office on Friday, the 9th, and then next Monday, the 12th, but I'll be in Des Moines. So if there's any, any big disaster emergency, I can zip right up this highway to be back here if you need me. And then just a reminder to everyone in the staff that the ISAC, Iowa Association of Counties, meetings are Thursday, August 22nd and Friday, August 23rd. And so finding elected officials and some department heads might be kind of tough if you're planning on conducting business at that level or have questions for the 22nd and the 23rd. And I'm done with my little update.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay, Olson.
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, meaning adjourned.
Thank you.